Welcome, everybody, to the Norton Planning Board's meeting of Tuesday, October the 10th, 2023. Again, this is a hybrid public meeting, so members of the public are welcome to participate in person or remotely. In person, we are at the Norton Media Center this evening at 184 West Main Street. Interested parties can join the meeting using the video link available on the meeting agenda or in the Zoom app using meeting ID 6389291060. There is also a phone number should you wish to dial in directly. Meeting will also be available on Norton Cable Access, Channel 15. For future meetings, should you want, if you are unable to attend and want to submit questions, comments, et cetera, you can please submit those ahead of the meeting to Brian Carmichael, town staff, for those comments to be shared with the board ahead of the meeting and entered into the record as appropriate. So with that out of the way, I just want to get into the meat of our agenda this evening. I don't think we have any planning board business and policies to discuss at this time, and we don't have any bills or warrants or minutes. So just to, I know there's been a few things going back and forth with updates from Brian today. So we did have originally three public hearings scheduled on our agenda. Two of those have asked for a continuance. The first one was Zero Rear Eddie Street. That applicant is requesting a continuance to November the 14th. And that applicant also, we had at one point talked about doing a site visit to that property. And if, not sure if everybody had a chance to read Brian's correspondence, but the applicant basically said that if we're able to give them kind of a 48-hour notice window that they can make sure that that's fine and they're aware that that's going to be us on the property, et cetera. So in terms of how we schedule that, does anybody have a preference one way or another? It's probably better to do that when it's light out, which is less time of the day than it normally is. How would we like to schedule that?
Daytime hours, I would, like, anytime before four o'clock, I would, I'm with my kids. I got two kids, so it'd be a weekend.
If we could do Fridays, I work from home generally on Fridays.
I could do Friday afternoons.
I can definitely wrap before four o'clock, though the season is getting dark.
That's tight there, yeah. If we do it soon, then maybe at four it works. If we do it in a couple of weeks, it might not be.
I'm gonna say the 20th, not too far away.
Let's see, I'm trying to look at multiple calendars here.
October, or?
Sorry, what?
The 20th of October?
Yeah.
I'm just trying to keep in mind, like, how fast some's gonna...
Yeah. The other, the other option is to look at weekends, which are crazy busy for everybody, I think, a lot.
I mean, I can make that.
Yeah, that's the, so...
I mean, if the whole board has to organize around a weekday and nobody minds, I bring two kids with me. It's a five-year-old and a two-year-old.
That's, that's a challenge to off-road.
It's fine with the property owner, I take them hiking all the time, but that's, you know.
That's an option. Why don't we think about it? And we'll say, maybe the 20th, if that doesn't work, then we're probably looking at a weekend, which is...
And for my, for my epoche in teaching, the weekend would work better for me.
Okay.
I don't mind if it's really early on the weekend, so everybody can get on with their day, or...
If it was a Saturday, I'd have to be in the afternoon.
Yeah.
I'd have to be after, like, 4:00.
My kids are awake early, too. I don't get to sleep then. Okay. So why don't we do, if we're centering around a potential weekend, again, this is, the site is fairly visible from the road if you want to do that, not that the road is safe for pedestrians at that point, at that section, but... We'll try and find a way to send around, a way to coordinate what days may or may not work over the next few weeks, looking at weekends and maybe AM/PM breakup of the days, see how we can do that.
Would it also...
Maybe just send around, like, a quick survey link or something that we can structure.
If it's also not kind of feasible for the whole group, can we do two sessions possibly?
Potentially.
Like, one weekend?
Potentially. Just turns into logistics and planning, if the applicant wants to be there.
Sure.
All that kind of stuff, so...
Whatever they're comfortable with, but...
Yeah. Okay. So Brian, I'll try and find a good service to do that, to email around, like, a survey or something. We can figure that out.
One question survey month or something?
Something like that, yeah. Okay. So outside of that, the applicant is requesting continuance to the 14th of November. Anything further on that?
Motion to continue special permit number 20475 until November 14th.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue until the 14th. I'm gonna go through the roll here, and Eric, I'll start with you, since you're right next to me.
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. So we are continuing for Zero Rare Eddie Street. Okay. The next continuance request is related to Zero South Washington Street. This was originally continued from the 26th. This is another one where we had some emailing back and forth after four o'clock today, where the applicant, the engineer originally requested a continuance to November the 14th, and then the owner sent a follow-up email asking instead to be on the meeting next week, stating that we should have all plans by Thursday, meeting two days from now.
Have you started this up?
This is, we haven't...
Not the new one, no.
We had a discussion.
We had a discussion about it because it, we had to determine whether it was a modification to the original submitted. So we have a general concept, which we never actually saw because of the file error. So if we are comfortable with files coming in on Thursday, then I would suggest that we keep it moving. That will be the agenda. We do have other things on the agenda for the 17th already, but not as much, or do we have as much?
I should, on the future agenda, what we're having for next week.
So... The next one would be Leonard Street with a road, Zero Reservoir, and Zero Mansfield, 300 South Washington, which we...
Continued, but I just...
Okay. And then Zero Dean. So that's coming back. So it's not a light agenda. So, but we do need to continue to a time and date certain. We can't just say we're gonna continue them and see what happens. Given that there's already four or five things on the agenda in front of them, we can put them there, but tell them they'll be, it'll be a late night, or we can...
Can we also tell when it's contingent upon them getting us the materials by the promised deadline?
We need to, we need to continue it to a time and date certain anyway. If they aren't able to provide plans with enough time for us to remove in advance, then yes, we would look to auto-continue it. So I will accept a motion on either date, depending on how people feel about that set of factors.
How many more? What's the 14th will come like? That's my question. 14th is just as busy, right?
That is...
And this is two technically?
Let's see, so Honeydew, 237 East Main, and Blue Star, and Serpeth is back. So neither of them are light.
Neither are light, so it really doesn't matter if you want.
Zero South Washington is probably a smaller project.
Motion to continue site plan review 20651 to October 17th.
Seconded.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay. I'll go through the roll again. Eric?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. So Brian, we can tell Mr. Patuik and Mr. Crowell that we've continued them to the 17th. If they don't get us the materials by the 12th, then we will continue them without discussion on that meeting.
Okay.
Okay. So the next item on our agenda is continued from our prior session. This is SP 20735 for 280 Newton Avenue. I know we've had some plan updates related to this project, so I'll ask the applicant to come forward and just speak to those and any other updates that they would like to present at this time.
Is this a good place, Mr. Chairman?
Sure, yeah, so you just address the board, and people, I think, in the room will be able to hear you as well, so yes.
All things. Mr. Chairman, my name is Brian Salter. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. With me tonight is Peter Bemis, engineer, in Armstrong, right?
Armington.
Armington, with the applicant. As you recall, this matter was before you once before, and this is the second hearing on this request to essentially raise the structure, the single-family home on the corner of New Washington, Newton Ave., and construct two duplex buildings. So whatever the pleasure of the board is, we're happy to proceed that way.
Sure. I think that, I know we had some updates to the plan, so we can go through those and any other updates or comments that you'd like to make. I know we received some information from the Historical Society about the building. I'm not sure if you were able to see that at all, but just in terms of their comments, so we can share those, and we may have some questions from members of the public at all, so...
So I don't know if you want to use your small screen or my board? I have some color on my board, so we can see if that helps, but I don't want to block your screen.
That's not the screen, that's...
No, it is because of the live feed.
That's the live feed, but that's okay. So there's another screen there.
So, am I blocking right now?
You're doing your best, I think.
Okay, very good, then, then perfect, great. Peter Bemis, engineer and design consultant. So there was a modification to the site plan. There had been some comments relative to potential parking that could occur on Meadowbrook Lane. We indicated that we didn't feel as though our project would cause that to occur. The current parking lot was associated with Meadowbrook. We're eliminating that with our proposal, so I thought it was still prudent to come back with something that was a modification, just to try to address the comment. So there had been a center island in the original proposal and three parking spaces on either side of that. We elected just to eliminate the center island and add one more parking space, so there would be a total of eight. That is well over the requirements under your bylaw for parking for this type of structure, and we still have the ability to stage parking in our driveway. We had to on some temporary basis for loading and unloading of a vehicle or whatnot. So that change was made. Our stormwater management system was so overdesigned that that added impervious area, which is just under 400 square feet, didn't amount to any change in the requirement. We reviewed that with your conservation agent, John Thomas, and he concurred. So our stormwater permit is still valid, that they had already issued. Our work limits don't change, we still have the same mitigation systems in place. As I stated, we do have a stormwater permit approved, we do have a port of health permit pending a licensed installer identified, that's obviously approved as well, just we have to identify the installer. So many components of this project, we're well under the density requirement, we have significantly more land area. We're actually trying to mitigate any impacts to buffer zone areas with this proposal. As you can see, this is our buffer zone to the wetland, we're staying well away from that. We did provide an evergreen screen toward our border to the north, and our improvements also stop on Meadowbrook is kind of an interesting roadway, and where the improvements are located, they are supposed to be on this side of that line, but they kind of meander a bit, but we are well within our property limits with where we connect. So, and we're not changing the travel way, we're just stopping well within our lot and making the connections properly. I'd be interested to hear what you have about the historical. I did download the district that you have, we're well outside of your district locally here, and, and I, you know, I did note the year that the building was constructed, but there have been a number of alterations that have occurred since those dates.
Yeah. So the, the summary that we got from the Historical Society was that it's the former Senate, it's called the Seneca Lincoln property. The original house burned down in 1908, and it was, then was then rebuilt, so the structure is over 100 years old. So Seneca Lincoln, according to all the documentation they have, which is amazing, had seven daughters and a son, and they lived there for a period of years.
Their, the daughter that lived there is the daughter of one of our prominent families from, with our history of town.
Yeah.
She was also, she ran the station over there, Meadowbrook Station, when the train was going by, that was her job, too. And I guess at one point the tracks were messed up, and she ran down the tracks and stopped the train to save the people. Little history to it, but...
We offered at the last meeting, that, because, because again, we note the history, you have got a look at Historical Society, we have no problem with them doing any documentation, finding anything of value that they can take from the property, and our goal is obviously to demolish, to get a demolition permit for the facility. One has been filed, but, but in the event that they find some value or something historic that they need to, to take from the property, they're more than welcome to.
Just to throw it out there, if it were possible to build your project but save that building also, is that of any interest at all?
I could certainly fit the two duplexes on there and keep the building, but that wouldn't be my decision to make, so we could certainly talk about that. Who would be able to benefit from the building, invest in it?
I suppose, as far as for you guys, this facility, or the builders, the owners' use for the auction, I suppose it would be maybe like just a central hall, like a meeting facility or whatever, but preserve the structure itself as opposed to demolishing it. That's my only real hesitancy on this plan, is to say to knock down that, that building. I don't think I can really prevent you guys from knocking down the building, you could probably just do that anyways, but that's my hesitance. I would like to see it preserved, if possible. I redrafted the plans just on my own, in a way that preserves the building, if you guys are interested in seeing it, but...
Kind of putting the structures behind the existing structure.
It's basically just moving them back a little bit and doing a wraparound drive.
I'm fairly confident I could do the same.
Right.
And still stay outside the buffer zone.
Right.
And still mitigate all the stormwater, so I'm pretty sure we could both do that.
If it would be in you guys' interest, I mean, I'd like to see that, that's my hesitance, is just to see that's a historic property done.
Yeah. It's, yeah, it's a, it's a concept.
Yep.
Yeah, ultimately, if that's what they don't want to do, then that's what they choose not to do, and we short vote on it accordingly.
All they can do is ask.
Yes, exactly. Okay. So obviously, for members of the board, when we heard this last, the hour was fairly late. Do we have any additional questions for the applicant at this time about the proposed plan? Okay. I know we do have some members of the public here who are kind of interested parties. If anybody would like to, if you don't mind seating the podium, I'll ask if anybody would like to come up and ask any other questions of the board.
All I would just say, my presentation is that I did provide you with seven interests from how I view a special permit, so those were written to the record at the last meeting, and, and I think there was some commentary regarding police reports for this. We did inquire on those, we hoped to have them for the meeting. We just put in a records request, but apparently that timeline hasn't expired yet. We do, we're told verbally that one was an animal that was hit, two others were alarms that were fire-related, so there wasn't anything else, any other incidents should be of concern, so I just wanted that to also be what we were able to find out between the last meeting and this meeting, as part of the discussion.
Okay.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
So if any members of the public would like to come up, please come to the podium and then just state your name and address for the record, please. And you can address any questions to the board, if there's any that I can answer, I'll do so. If there's one where I'll ask the applicant afterwards, I'll do that as well.
Ted Marble, 38, Meadowbrook Lane. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you to the board, members of the board, and for hearing us. I'm just gonna summarize kind of what we talked about the last meeting. It was late, and I just made sure that things were heard. Meadowbrook Lane is a private way. It's in an R60 zone, not R80. The letter that the applicant submitted to the board suggested it was in an R80. It's in an R60. I don't know if that means anything or not, but just wanted to point that out, that it looks like there's an error in that, in that letter. One of the things I noticed on the plan is in Note 10, over to the right there, it says the Norton Department of Public Works will be notified prior to any work being done on Meadowbrook Lane. Meadowbrook Lane is a private way, not a, not a town road, so it's owned by the residents on Meadowbrook Lane, and we don't want any changes made to our private way, where they want to come onto our Meadowbrook Lane. So you want to put that concern out there?
The applicant is, I mean, they can tell the town of Public Works, that's fine, even if it doesn't affect them. They're stating that they're working only on their property line, so...
Okay. And you know, I, I pointed it out at the last meeting that the abutac to them, his lot line is shared with their lot line, so it actually goes, it's the only pass on Meadowbrook Lane that cuts right across the lane and goes to the other pass. Usually the deeds would say the northerly side or the southerly side of the right-of-way being Meadowbrook Lane.
If all the historical plans make sense, we'd have a lot less things to, minutia to dig through.
Right. There were issues with the parking in the past. They only had five bedrooms at that time, when they would have events or meetings, and I don't know what it was, but there would be over a dozen cars there. I noticed that he came with, came in with eight spaces, but that wouldn't, that wouldn't satisfy the needs of all the people that are there at times for meetings, and I probably witnessed that happen there, maybe 10 or 12 times.
They have provided, park, as much parking as is required by zoning. If they park on somebody else's property, then that property owner probably has the right to have them towed.
And I believe that will happen if this, if this does go through. They want to double the capacities to 10 bedrooms to house more clients, is what it really comes down to. So the eight spaces is probably not going to be enough. If they had 12 cars when they had five clients there, then I don't know what it'll be if they double that capacity. And, and, you know, parked on the side of Meadowbrook Lane, and that, that caused interruptions at time for folks. We had to go get them to move the cars because it was actually blocking. So we, you know, the concern here is where is the overflow parking for those meetings or those events, whatever that is? We don't want it on Meadowbrook Lane. It's, it's, it can be a hazard for various vehicles to access. That would be a concern. We do have elderly residents on Meadowbrook Lane. The historic home built in the 1800s, and then rebuilt again, I think you said 1908, we just feel it would be a shame to tear it down under a special permit, to have that happen to a historical home. It's a, it's a concern of ours. We heard at the last meeting that some of the residents, or some of the neighbors, had issues with the clients not being supervised properly, walking around homes at night, looking in windows, entering homes without permission, flocking in. So that's a, that's a big concern of ours. There's an ongoing issue that's going to come up, I guess, and it may end up in court, I don't know. I think someone is here that'll talk to that tonight. They've got an issue with the lot lines, I, they have had a surveyor there, and I, I saw it. It's, it's quite a piece of land that they may lose, that's going, definitely have an effect on this, but I know that's not a concern, yes, but it is something that we are concerned about, that what happens, you know, if this goes through and then that happens, what's next?
Yeah, no, I mean, yeah, I, I think, I tried to explain this at the last session, but a lot line dispute between both parties is something that could be, would have, could happen after the decision one way or the other. The other point that you mentioned about the supervision, and I would, I would say that, I would simply ask what, I would say that any complaints in that respect should be directed at whatever state agency that the, that this service reports into, say assume there is one, along with their corporate team. But yeah, we understand that it's continuing of the same use that has been there, it's just a change in size and scope potentially.
So, and I'm, I'm going to try to be brief, I don't want to keep you here all night, and you probably look forward to having a meeting that doesn't go to midnight. So this is the second time that this business has tried to expand a number of beds to house more clients at the site. It was rejected the last time, it was a different plan. Again, it's owned R60, it's not commercial. We consider it a business. That's the way it looks to us, the way it feels to us. Zoned R60, not commercial. But with that being said, and the other concerns that are discussed, we don't feel the residents of Meadowbrook Lane to be subjected to the expansion of the business under special permit. So I want to thank you, Mr. Chairman, for hearing me, I want to thank the board, and I want to thank you all for your service to our town.
Thank you. And I would say, just to speak to the zoning, the zoning use, there are specific notes for, like, institutional home or group home in our zoning table, and this would fit in a residential district.
It does. It's a condo-lessee home, right?
All of those, there's like three or four different categories in there, and they all fit in residential zones. Yes, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Matthew Costa. I am an attorney with an office in 73 Washington Street in Tonton, and I represent Zachary Pike, who's the owner of 276. And I did watch the recording of the prior meeting, so I am aware that the issue about the occupation of the area north of the fence was brought up, and, so I don't want to restate anything that was said at the last meeting, but for purposes of this meeting, I would just like to suggest to the board that, so based on that situation, my client and the prior owners, they've been using the area north of the fence as their yard, and if any of the board members go by, they'll, they'll see that, and actually, the, the area's been staked off after the last meeting, the owners of 280, they had the boundary as shown in this plan staked, and they... The owners of 280, they had the boundary as shown in this plan staked, and they had no trespassing signs put up that face my client's property, which, you know, that's really not an issue for the planning board, but, you know, at least that illustrates the area that I'm speaking to. So, what we would respectfully submit, that, you know, based on that unique situation, what my client's interest is, is to maintain a buffer based on where the fence line is. So, what I would respectfully submit, and I actually was listening with interest when it was suggested that the existing building be utilized in some way, maybe the footprint shifted south because the evergreen screen, of course, is useful, but not when it's really in this area, basically my client's yard. And so, his interest would be to have the entire project moved south, basically maintain the setback from where the existing fence is. And, you know, the evergreen screen, basically, where the fence is, move the entire project to the south. And I know.
I think the proposal that was discussed was to move the project east rather than south.
Okay. So, maybe this is a little bit of a variation on that theme, but that would at least take, you know, the planning board, its decision out of this potential issue, which I know you have a stamped plan. I know that that's the plan you have. I know that a court, only a court can decide where a boundary is that's other than that, and no one knows when, you know, when that might ever happen. So, I know you have a stamped plan. We're not contesting that. But if the entire project was moved to the south, that would satisfy my client's concern. And I'm here to speak on behalf of my client about what his concerns are about this plan. And to a large extent, it's that it's basically right up against the area that's been used as his yard during his ownership and prior ownerships.
Yeah. I think, I tried to state this during the last session, but I think if your client feels that they have a right to that section of land due to adverse possession or some other legal process, then I almost view that, other members of the board may feel differently. I almost view that as separate as what we're looking at, that your client is welcome to file an appeal to if, should this permit go through. And that appeal, I assume, could include that claim of adverse possession, that they're building on land that's not really theirs.
Right, and that's all understood, and I'm not here to dispute that. I'm just suggesting that one sort of constructive way to condition approval would be to move the project south, and that issue too would be addressed. So, that's, that's all I have for you board members, so thank you.
If, if your client and the applicant come to some kind of resolution to that respect, then that's something that we could consider. Otherwise, we have to look at the plan we have in front of us. And if they choose not to move the building, they choose not to move the building.
That's understood. I do know that the board can condition approval on, on different things, and so, we're suggesting a condition, and I don't know if the board would inquire with the applicant about that suggestion, but trying to suggest something constructive. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Costa. Okay.
Hi. My name is Trina Rostrum.
If you could just speak up just a little bit louder, because you have to go to the microphone there to make sure everybody listening remotely can hear us.
Oh, is the mic?
I think it's right on the table there.
Oh. All right. My name is Trina Rostrum. I am an abutto directly across the street, 277 Toninav. And I am here to sort of, well, really, just to kind of oppose this plan as it exists today. We bought our home 23 years ago across the street from what we thought was a historical home, one-family home. And the plans, as we've seen for this special permit, my understanding is it's basically two buildings, so it's doubling the size of what was there previously, which I don't understand how the parking will be enough if, there was always problems with parking. And if you're doubling the amount of residents, that doubles the amount of help on each shift, I would assume. And that brings in a lot more traffic and nowhere for them to park. There wasn't enough parking when there was five residents. So, my understanding is each building is going to be five bedrooms. Is that correct?
I believe that is correct.
And how many residents would that be?
This, so, we could, we'll ask, we'll confirm that with the applicant in follow-up. I just always want to address your questions to the board, and we can ask them, and that way it doesn't turn to a cross-examination kind of.
So, the concern is over basically doubling the amount of people that will be living over there versus what had been previously looking at.
Yes.
The request for the special permit indicates that it won't change the neighborhood in any way. Yes, it will. We're raising a historical home that all of us look at now with multiple trees that are probably 100 years old in the yard that I believe by this plan would be also taken down. So, it definitely changes the entire look of the neighborhood from something that was historical, one-family homes to a sort of institutional look and feel. So, those are my concerns. It's not something that's making anyone in the neighborhood too happy about to have that double the, the amount of space. So, I thank you for listening and considering our concerns.
Thank you.
Hello again. So, yeah, my name's Lucas Ray. I live at 276 Toninav, Director Abutto, 280 Toninav Project. So, I just wanted to make a couple notes. You know, last time I was here, we spoke about the problems we've had with this house in the past, you know, the past 20 years. There's no oversight. Well, I've seen up to 15 people in this house with no oversight, no management. We've had people looking at windows of my property. There was, you know, residents walking across the street. A neighbor's house walked in his house, walked in the front door, out the back door. The previous owners of Mr. Pike's house, the Sullivan's, actually moved out. I was able to recently reach out to them. The wife, Carolyn, told me that, you know, there were members, there was autistic folks in the home naked in the windows masturbating. That's what, that's what they were dealing with. You know, this just came to light. We've had multiple police reports. Mr. Pike's seen people naked running around the yards. There's no management over there. Now, they want to propose adding another five bedrooms, doubling the capacity. I just took it upon myself a couple minutes ago to Google Earth the property, and I'll be happy to show you guys this, but I see eight vehicles in the driveway. This is a five-bedroom house right now. They're proposing eight parking spots. They get eight vehicles in this Google Earth photo whenever that was taken. So, now you're doubling the capacity. You're going to double the amount of people in this property, which is just going to make the neighborhood a little more hectic. I'm not sure where you folks live, but I'm sure you wouldn't want that in your backyard. You know, I got kids, my neighbor's got kids. You know, there's no oversight. That's what I just wanted to make up.
That's it. Thank you, Mr. Eric. Anybody else who'd like to make a comment at this time? I'll also make a note, if anybody is joining us via remotely via the Zoom meeting, if you'd like to use their reactions function in Zoom to raise your hand, you can please feel free to do so. I'm going to ramble here for a couple of seconds here to see if anybody needs to find that button. Other than that, I'll ask if one of the members of the applicant's team wants to just clarify with the 10 bedrooms, the number of projected residents and the staff count that'd be associated with that? However, you want, whoever wants to just speak. I know that in the previous session, you stated that the occupancy could vary in terms of up and down, but just in terms of.
Yeah, I just say, want to make it clear that the existing, well, the program that was there was a children's program. So, in children's programs, usually everyone doesn't have their own room, you know, so there was more clients in that house than there were bedrooms. Okay, so, amigo, when we have adult programs, which is what this house would be, it's one client to each bedroom. Now, the staff ratio can depend on the type of clients that live in the house. So, if someone's really, you know, how acute they are, what their needs are, we may have more staff, we may have less, but typically two to three staff per side of the property.
And you have two vans, correct?
Yeah, there would be two vans, yeah.
So, you're at.
None of our clients drive, so.
So, right there, you're already maxed out with three staff and two vans on each side with no, with maybe, and then you're parking on the side of the driveway for any kind of shift change?
Well, the vans typically park in like the pickup area, like they park in the turnaround because they're picking up and dropping. So, they probably park or staged here. So, the staff are really going to be the ones using the spots.
Okay.
I'm sure we could probably kind of like put more parking in. That's the main concern.
Just in terms of, you stated kind of two to three staff per side, and then I know there were two vans, so I did, I can count to eight at least, so.
Yeah. The vans, like they typically leave during the day, you know, because they're at the day program, and then they come back and do things.
Okay.
And I can assure you that the meetings where there may have been multiple cars was basically just because this house had a large, the existing house had a large like meeting room that some of the children's program staff liked to use as for group meetings. We recently built a children's campus in Franklin that has its own community center, and that's where all our meetings are now, so. And we also have a headquarters like a few miles up the road in Attleboro, so we don't plan on having any type of meetings or gatherings at this location, so.
And so, your headquarters is in Attleboro?
Yes.
And just from a, I know the state has 25 different agencies for everything, which, is there a specific agency that you report into for licensing and everything?
Department of Environmental Services.
Development Services? Okay.
DDS.
Thank you. Do we have any additional questions for the applicant at this time? As we see members of the public coming up, so. I don't want to cut you out here. I just wanted to.
Zach Pike, 276 Toninav, Director Abutto. I just had a question. What, what are we considering children? You mentioned that it was a children's program. What are those ages? Because those, we did not see children under the age of at least 18 that were living in that, in that building and running around the yard that were naked and heading off into the very busy street. So, I'm just trying to understand that, because these are older children that have been, if they're going to call them children, but they're over 18 at least that I've seen, that I've witnessed for the five years that I've been there, so. See if we can clarify that.
I know it was under prior ownership, so I'm not sure what the applicant is, how much detail they have to go into that in terms of the ages, but we can ask.
So, they're older, they're still doing the same.
We can ask.
The same business.
Thank you. I don't know if you have any additional information you'd like to share on that or no, or it's, if you don't have any additional information, then.
I guess I just want to say that, you know, I think 22 is, at that time, was the age that they considered them able to be in a children's program, so.
That was the DDS rule at the time?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, and this isn't a home where our clients are going to be moving in and out, like it's not temporary. This is their forever home. We're trying to build a place where they can live the rest of their lives. So, five guys will form a family and live there in one side, and then another five on the other side. So, there's not, it's not like people are coming and going and we're bringing new people. It's, we're building people homes, you know, so, forever homes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll say, I do see that somebody had submitted a message in the meeting chat. Items in the Zoom chat are not part of the meeting record. If you would like to speak, you are able to, but.
My name is Peter McKean. I'm a resident of 30 Meadowbrook Lane, if that's okay.
Thank you, sir.
Excuse me. I think my number one concern, which mirrors a lot of my neighbor's concerns, is more about erosion and impact to the lane. So, my concern is to make sure they mitigate the runoff from the driveway. I'd submitted a number of photos, photographed evidence, if you will. And I understand this is not a trial, it's a, you know, meeting to establish whether they have the right to build. But if they don't take into account their expansion along with the, you know, trying to mitigate the current situation they create on the road, we have, we have craters that develop on the road that are a result of the runoff coming from their driveway. So, my chief concern is about that. We need to stop that, because once you start that crater, and now with UPS and everybody's appetite for Amazon, we have a lot of trucks coming down the lane and it can, and submit, you know, evidence here to the chat as well. But the other gentleman, I did want to point out while I was looking at it, very vividly points out the fact that they have parked in the lane as well. If you look at our lane at the largest point right there, it's about 12 feet wide. And so, that is a significant issue as well. And I've actually had to walk up there to ask people to move with trucks coming down. And so, one of my neighbors had signed the safety tickets. We do have an elderly population that live down the lane, and if they're going to keep parking where they are on the lane, or they're not going to have adequate parking, it's going to potentially attack safety. So, I just want to raise those points, and I appreciate the opportunity to share.
Thank you, sir. And just for a point of information for everybody, because we look at storm, talk about stormwater every meeting, but not everybody else does, obviously, in their day-to-day life. The applicant does have a stormwater permit through the conservation agent. Norton Stormwater Bylaw essentially says that you have to design a stormwater system where the amount of stormwater that leaves your site has to be less than or equal to what is happening now. And they are doing, and the calculations that they have are doing, they're capturing more runoff off the site than comes off the site now. So, from that perspective, the engineering, all the engineering math says it should be, if anything, from that perspective, a little bit better. But your, your comments about the parking and the other things are noted. Thank you.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak.
Okay. So, do we have any additional questions for the applicant at this time? Do we have any additional questions in general? I think.
I got a comment, I guess. Again, I'd like to reiterate that I reconceptualized the project in a way that saves the house. It adds the parking, and it also mitigates the buffer zone of the neighbor, if that's what you guys choose. I think it's worth looking at instead of jumping on something without an alternative in front of me. That, you know, it's my, my view on it, and if anybody wants to see what I've worked on, I'm happy to share it.
Brian, do you have that file?
It's too big for email, so I didn't get it.
I can send them just one at a time, or I got it here if the board wants to.
Yeah, if, I mean, you can, if you can join the Zoom meeting and share it, you should have the ability to do so. Yeah, we can talk about it. I don't know if.
Well, at least, well, I'm up my like two comments. I don't have a problem with historical value of the house. I don't think a 100-year-old house in a 300-year-old town is terribly historic. The Historical Society didn't have any, any reservation about taking it down. All they had was common was the history of the house. That being said, we are down a member tonight also, but I think just to point that out to them, we need a super majority with a special permit.
We would need a super majority, which in this case would be five out of six.
Five out of six, just to point that out to the app.
Yes. That other member would potentially be able to vote at another session, should they be able after reviewing the meeting and filling in the.
I personally weigh very heavily on social permits, abutters, and neighbors' comments more than the most. That's what I take into account, I would say. That's just my opinion.
Okay.
Going along with Alan's comment, I kind of feel the same way. We gave the Historical Society an opportunity to weigh in on this. We gave the Historical Society an opportunity to weigh in on the historical significance of this property, and while they did relay the history and the ownership and gave us some very interesting information, there was no reference made to the historical importance of the building, no request to preserve it in any way. And I'm kind of of the opinion to condition them to require to maintain it is, it's imposing a hardship on the applicant, because now they will not only have to build two, two new buildings and pay for reengineering of the site plan, they will also continue to have to maintain and ensure a 100-year-old building made of wood. And I'm of the opinion that, you know, if you've got that many people living in a structure, it should be safe, and I don't feel it's presently safe, and I don't see a need to keep it just to look at it. It's unreasonable request.
It's why it's important to have varied opinions on boards. So, were you able to join the meeting?
I don't think I can on here, but I'll try to send just one file.
Okay. Just to look at that, and I guess from a, I mean, the applicant's perspective, they can choose to, to say, that's not something we really want to consider due to the cost, they could make a similar comment in terms of whether they felt it was appropriate or helpful to move the project south in the event that something with the northerly lot line turns into, turns into something else. Obviously, if we were to grant a special permit and then the butter were to appeal, and then the lot line was moved, they would need to get a modification of the special permit regardless. So whether they design for that now, design for that later, that's something that we would see down the road.
To counter one, one other thing that Laura said about the usefulness of the, of the building is, if they are going to be housing 10 people on this grounds plus staff, it, it is a place that deserves some sort of community area other than just being stuck inside of two bedrooms or two small little houses, relatively. I'm not sure how big the houses are, but-
There may be common areas and that, and things areas as well, so that's, sure.
In my regard, the more you can provide might be better, but it's, it's all opinion.
For things that fall under our purview, I do hear the concern of the butters. I would look to condition that there is no parking allowed on Meadowbrook by anybody within 280 Newton-Conton. I additionally think, given what we've seen, you may want to consider adding some additional parking. You seem to have significant, significant amount of land available, and, you know, I think it is a reasonable request to potentially consider additional parking, even if it's just a blacktopped area where the vans can go.
The plan I drew up could be expanded up to 12 parking, but it has nine on it right now.
Yeah, to a point, they do meet the parking requirements for the zoning. So we're asking, we would be asking the app to go above and beyond what is required by zoning even further than they are now.
As a, as a general-
Understanding the historical use and the levels of parking that are to be expected, that's not unreasonable, but just as a note to that respect.
Are you-
I, I sent the email.
Brian is sharing it, or starting to share it in just a second, just from a theoretical perspective.
It's the lowest, it's all we can fit for size, I don't know if it's-
I think we get the idea, yeah, the existing structure, and you have parking on the left, and parking tucked into the building there.
You run it as a loop around the building so that the cars don't have to run through Meadowbrook Lane, and then for the Meadowbrook Lane access, maybe like a gate, so it could be used if they need to, but not generally providing a traffic there or there.
Fortunately, it's adding a second curb cut right next to a curb cut.
And that, is that a state road at that point? So DOT would be involved?
Yeah.
So that might be, that'd be something that we-
And I don't think, I'm not sure that, what the design is in terms of the distance you need in between, well.
Yeah, but we, we understand, we understand the concept.
Sure.
Definitely, Steve. Okay.
I was gonna say, that second row of bushes runs along the currently used property line, but that's another mitigation factor, it's not the line.
Yeah, understood. Okay. So, we've talked about some ideas, we've heard from some of the butters. I'll turn it back over to you in terms of if there are, if there's anything that you would like to consider at this time, if there are modifications that you're looking to make, or if you feel you've presented all you want to present and you would like us to close the public hearing and move on.
So I do want to raise a couple of things. When it first came in, there was a gentleman, I thought, participating remotely, is he no longer with us?
There is a gentleman who's sitting remotely, we're still, we have one member who is ill tonight.
Okay, all right, so I was just trying to understand the dynamic of the vote, because that was important for decision-making.
We do have, we have six members present this evening, we had seven in our previous session.
All right. So I do want to say that we have no problem posting, no parking, but the condition that the member had raised is fine with us, and is on our property, so we could easily do that without putting them on the opposite side, which we don't have control over, so we could easily do that. I have no problem adding two more parking spaces, the site can accommodate it, the stormwater management system can accommodate it, we created a high spot here, so we can keep all the water on our property, so that part wouldn't change, we'd still be able to do that. One of the other comments is, and the butter names are the trees, we are preserving those trees along the street, we're not taking them.
And Norton has a historic tree by law as well, if those fell into it, I don't believe they do, but-
We wanted to keep them all, so that was important to us. The other item I'd raise, and certainly not going to debate the butters' claim of that versus possession, but there's enough historical information that we've already gleaned, and we did post it, because it was approved, they do, the property line is defined, there were monuments, some of which had to be reset. So, that much is done, completed. The comment regarding saving the building, as Andy had mentioned, they did create a new space to be able to do that in Franklin at their facility, so there's really no need for a facility to accommodate that use, so then we'd be preserving a building that we really don't have a need for, and there would be a significant cost associated with that. I do appreciate the effort that you went to to do that, I give you a lot of credit for taking the time to do that as a board member, but I think it's important for us to eliminate the building as part of the proposal, but I have no problem that being a condition in your decision, to let the Historical Society go through the building, they can take their inventory, they can take their records, those are important things to do, we've done that in other communities. But I'd also like to try to restrict our footprint, we were trying to create a natural buffer zone with this, there is a woodwind here, and it's already pressed upon, so to the extent we could retain that, we'd like to keep the proposal the way we have it, but I have your support, that that's an important factor for me to consider. So, a lot of thought went into what we've put here, so I'll just recap by saying, we'll add the signs for parking, we'll add the parking spaces, we can go to 10 if you feel like, you know, I just don't want to have too much asphalt here, unnecessarily. And we do have on-site stormwater management with the proposal, we have, we've not eliminated our evergreen screen, that is the proposal, for some reason the butter was to prevail, we're back before you again, we know that, and that's the, that's the chance we take. We're fairly confident where our boundary is and how the use has been done over the years.
That's, that's your decision?
Right. Do you want to add anything, Andy?
Again, I'm not opposed to adding some parking, for sure. And I, and I just want to make it clear that I will be a part of enforcing people on my staff not parking on Meadowbrook, I don't think that that's right.
I mean, really, the first conversation we had was eliminate the access off of Meadowbrook, because that's how the existing parking law work. We knew that wasn't, that's a chokestopper, so that's why we did it this way. If I thought that I could successfully get a curb cut next to that driveway, I would have shown it that way, I don't think we'd be successful with that, the site distance is way too short. For two driveways that could be exiting simultaneously, no one's ever going to say, we shouldn't design it, so, I'm sorry, we're going to have to just make a dead end, and I just don't think that's the right thing to do here. So by making the connection here, that makes the most sense. So I thank you for the opportunity to present this, and you are prepared to close, if there's no other issues, then we pass the closing.
Okay, so this is, we answered the potential request for two additional parking spaces, and the other condition we had discussed, you, you're satisfied with the plan that you have?
Correct, yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. So, that's the applicant's position. Do we have any further comments, questions? Again, to the, if the applicant would prefer to continue to a session where we have seven members, that is their option, we could close the public hearing regardless.
Right, that's what I was going to say, is the seventh member, you don't have to vote this evening, because you have time on your side, and the other member can invoke Mullins. I just don't, I just feel like there's nothing further we wish to add, but I have no problem with not rendering a decision, and allowing that other member to invoke Mullins and participate. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could ask? Yes, please.
When would be the next time that you would hear this?
We have not discussed that at this point, so we don't know that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay. So, we can choose to, the applicant has stated they have nothing else to present. We can choose to close the public hearing, we can choose to both this evening, we can choose to wait and continue to another session and vote at a later session. We can choose to continue without closing the public hearing as well, if we prefer to do that. I'm okay with voting now, if anybody else wants to think about things, that's fine. I think the, the question is, but whether we want to, whether we, because we're down a member-
We're down a member, so-
The applicant would need five out of six for a super majority for a special permit, as opposed to five out of seven. That would be the, I think, the primary-
Sure.
-the reason for a potential delay. So, so if we, I'll listen to a motion to close the public hearing if we want to, if we want to not close the public hearing and leave that as open, we can do that as well. Public hearing, just close the public hearing, just means we won't take any additional comments from members of the public or the applicant, and what we have is what we have.
Motion to close the public hearing, request P20735.
Seconded.
Okay, we have a motion to, in a second, to close the public hearing, thank you, Alan and Laura. Is there any further discussion on the motion to close the public hearing? Okay, I will go through the roll. Eric?
Yes.
Steve?
No. We'll close the public hearing?
Close the public hearing, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And I will vote yes as well, so the public hearing is closed. We can now choose to, motion to vote on the special permit, or vote to continue the vote to a future session. Again, that future session, we would not take any new evidence or comments, we would just vote on what we have here.
Motion to continue vote to a further session.
We would have to pick a time and date, sir.
Okay, we want to do the next-
November 14th, man, yeah.
So those are the next, so our next-
How much time do we want to?
So our next meeting is next week?
Yeah.
And then after that, is there anything in before the 14th, or is it, no?
It's the week after Thanksgiving, so.
So the 14th and then the 28th is our meetings in November.
All right, motion to continue the vote related to special permit 20735 to November 14th, is the date?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second to continue to the 14th.
Second.
We have a second. Is there any further discussion on the motion to continue to November the 14th for a vote?
Tim, can I just ask Laura if the only reason we're continuing is because we want Alan present?
You mean Wayne?
Wayne.
Say again?
You mean Wayne.
Wayne, yes, I'm sorry.
I'm a little younger, Jim.
Yeah.
Sorry.
She said yes, so that is her primary reason for the continuance.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, is there any further discussion on the motion to continue to the 14th? Okay, I will now go through the roll for the continuation of the 14th, if anybody doesn't want to continue it, they can vote no. Eric?
Yes.
Steve?
No.
Laura?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And I will vote yes, so we are continuing the vote to November the 14th, and that is The extension's the last, right? Steve voted against?
Oh, yes, so it's going to be 5 to 1.
5 to 1, no extensions, yes. Okay, so, we will vote on the 14th, and if we can just confirm with Wayne, when he is able, that he's able to watch tonight's sessions and sign the Mullins form to participate. Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Okay. I don't believe we have any other business on our agenda this evening, but we do need to close out, so if anybody's going to leave, please, I ask you to please just leave quietly and calmly. Okay? Anything else that we wanted to discuss at this session? Obviously, we have, I don't know if we wanted to talk a little bit about what we had coming up in our next session, which is Leonard Street, we have zero reservoir and zero Mansfield. If we do have any comments for Zero Mansfield, they were with us briefly in our last session, we said if we had any questions, we would send them to them. I think we originally said we would try and get the questions by last week, so they could get our responses by this week, but I'm sure they'll take any comments when we can get them. I'm not immune, I believe I sent Brian my comments last night, so.
And Dan received this one.
And then we have Zero Reservoir as well, 300 South Washington, Zero Dean Street, and Zero South Washington. So we have a busy session next time.
My only thing I would say is, eventually, when we have the full board, I think we should take a vote with the full board, whether we want information regarding the next meeting a week before, five days before, on the website, it says a week, that's pretty standard across boards throughout many towns. I don't think it's unreasonable, personally, some of these cases-
We've had it as a policy at different points.
Correct, I just think we need this board-
And we've gotten lax at it at different points. I know I've gotten lax with it, especially since when Brian's been trying to do multiple things at once.
Hundred percent.
And I understand that if we had a planner and other people who were-
But also, information at the last minute's not helping Brian either.
No, but-
I don't know, it's just my preference, I've said it multiple times, I just, I think we should just, as a board, vote on it, or as boards turn over, I think it's, if a board's different and they can ingest everything in three days with a weekend, power to them, but that's just my, my-
I, I like to look at things, think about them, go, oh, yeah, that doesn't make sense.
Yeah.
At three in the morning, three days later, when I can't sleep, yeah.
Or, we get it the afternoon.
Or, we get it the afternoon of, and they come in and say, well, there's only a few minor edits, and we just wanted to come and present them to you, and then they expect us to make a decision that night, and that's not, that's not fair.
And we say no.
Yeah.
That's...
It's not fair to vote, it's either.
No.
Especially people tracking, how does somebody tracking any of the meetings tonight find information that's submitted on Friday afternoon, and now our meeting's Tuesday night? It's also not fair to the town or butters' department.
Yeah, I agree. Okay. Is there anything else that we wanted to discuss in the open session? Otherwise, I would look for a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Okay, thank you, Laura and Steve. Is there any further discussion on the motion to adjourn? Mary Nun, Eric?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. We are adjourned, thank you very much, everybody.